I keep saying J two.
Hi, call the meeting to order. This is the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting, Thursday, December nineteenth, 2024. And let's start. A reminder that a recording device will be in use during the meeting. Let's open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under public comment for agenda items, let me read the information first and then we'll have the comments. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comments may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Are there any public comments for agenda items? Eighteen nine. Wanted the minutes? I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes. Last meeting.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Judiciary report. An authorization to pay bills and approval of the payroll. I will make a motion to do so. To do so.
And I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Courts. Township manager.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. I am pleased to announce that the township and A.J. Blazinski have executed a contract for the curbside collection of municipal waste and recycling for a period beginning January first and ending December thirty first, 2026. There are options to extend this contract for an additional two years. The board previously authorized staff and the solicitor to award a contract at your meeting on August fifteenth, 2024. In addition to executing a contract, all bid bonds and confidential financial material from unsuccessful bidders have been returned, and we have received a performance bond in an amount equal to the provision of one year's service from A.J. Blazinski. Next year, there will be no change to the collection date, which is Tuesday. A complete list of collection dates, including a printable calendar, is available online at ebrandywine.org. I'd next like to give an update on the non-uniformed paid time off, or PTO benefit. On December twenty first, 2023, this board adopted a Resolution 11 of 2023 amending the non-uniformed employee handbook.
Okay.
One amended policy pertained to paid time off, or PTO, which was introduced as a substitution for the concepts of vacation days, personal days, and sick leave. This new policy allowed for the buyback of unused leave at the conclusion of the year. Developing a fiscal note for this new policy was difficult because we were without any years' prior experience. I can now report at the conclusion of the first full year of the PTO policy that buyback actual usage was 274 hours for a total of $12,680.52. There are thirteen members of staff eligible to utilize this benefit. Lastly, before I reserve the balance of my comments for agenda items, Township Secretary Teraskey has published the schedule for all 2025 public meetings and the daily local on December ninth. This same information has been published online at ebrandywine.org/calender. Ebrandywine.org/calender. This evening, I would like to note the unusual circumstances of the first meeting of this board in January due to the second-class township code-required annual organization meeting, which will be held at 9:00 a.m. on January sixth here in this room. In addition, in the coming weeks, township offices will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty fourth, Wednesday, December twenty fifth, and Wednesday, January first. I would like to wish everyone a peaceful and happy holiday and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you. Building inspectors report.
Would you like me to read this into the record?
Yes.
All right. For the period ending November 2024, submitted by Noran King, permits administrator, there were thirty-four total building permits issued, two zoning permits issued. Fees collected for building and zoning permits equaled $39,980.25. There were seventeen use and occupancy permits issued, 139 inspections completed during which there were zero failures. All fees collected were the, as Afros had mentioned, $39,980.25.
Boatmaster, please.
Thank you. FEMA update. The culvert located on Old Hershey Pike is scheduled for replacement in the spring of 2025, spring of next year. The culvert was damaged during Hurricane Ida in September of 2021. We've received a FEMA grant for $440,000 for the replacement of the facility, and I was informed by PMA and that any additional cost occurred above that number for the grant should be reimbursed by FEMA and PMA. Our leaf collection this fall was the largest one to date. We collected eighty-two loads of leaves in our 25-yard container, which equals 2,050 yards, or 359 tons of leaves. Spring collection is scheduled for the week of April ninth. Residents are reminded to place the leaves on the grass along road edge on Monday of the collection week. Please do not place leaves on the road. This causes a hazard to motorists using our road, and this year there were issues with residents placing large piles on the road, causing obstruction to motorists and also blocking storm drains. For chipping this year, the department chipped for 405 residents in the township. This is up from 222 from the previous year. The increase was due to the high winds from Hurricane Debbie, which hit the township around July twenty-seventh, causing trees and wires down. The road department is prepared for snow removal this winter. We have 300 tons of salt, three large trucks, and three mid-sized trucks for salt application and plowing. Residents are reminded to remove their vehicles from the roads within two hours after the start of the snowfall and until the roads are cleared from curb to curb. The department continues to have street signs stolen in very locations of the township. The sign replacement costs the residents of the township between 150 and 250 per location. If you see something or capture something on your camera, please report it to the police department immediately. Respectfully submitted, Matthew Van Lou.
All right, thank you. Police Department report.
Evening. The report for November 2024, the police department recorded 2,352 events. We have conducted 176 investigations. Department had nine criminal arrests, two summary arrests, no warrant arrests. One juvenile petition was filed. We investigated six traffic accidents, issued 98 traffic citations, 56 traffic warnings, and officers logged 9,438. Didn't have any training that we had to complete this month. There were no correspondences. You have copies of the monthly investigations and the officers' activity reports. Comments. We want to wish everyone a very happy holiday. Please be mindful of your surroundings and drive carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And East Brandywine Fire Company?
Sixty-one total incidents for the month, forty-four fire calls and seventeen medical calls. We had a total fire call, eight medical calls. East Brandywine, sixteen.
Fire and eight.
West Brandywine.
Fire.
We assisted with our mutual aid partners to ten different townships. We had an average personnel number of eleven point six for calls and seventeen for major things. Two. Two hundred and fifty-five. Twenty-five. West Brandywine, two hundred and seventy-six pounds. Fire damage. We had two trades in November. Average personnel was twenty-two for a total of ninety pounds of train. I have here, we had breakfast with Santa. That was a huge hit. It seems like every year. It seems to be better than that. Second, we got a grant from the state representative, Daniel, for $100,000, which is pretty exciting for us. Put that one towards new rescue tools for the new rescue truck. The next thing is, if we already have purchased the new rescue truck, it's good news, it's in production now, so we're up to our fourth progress report from Pierce. So, ab is fully painted, the rescue body is well underway, so we're hoping to see that truck in some time in February, potentially early March for that, so that's another big thing. And lastly, just wish everybody to save and have a hell of a.
Thank you, Chief. And not only your campus here tonight, we do have a representative from Minkus who would like to give their report.
Good evening. For the month of November, Minkus had 499 dispatches, 248 were ALS, including fourteen here in East Brandywine, 251 dispatches for BLS, including seven here in East Brandywine, with a total transports of 277, thirteen from East Brandywine. Top call types here in the township, ALS heart problems, ALS fall, BLS sick person, and ALS abdominal pain. Went to Chester County Hospital nine times, went to Paley four. The only thing I have to say is, membership subscription went out in the mail, so everybody should be receiving them. If you have any questions, make sure you call the station, and we look forward to a healthy and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Is there any other business? New business. Would you like to do seven A?
Yes, please, thank you. Wasn't gone for long. Your agenda item seven A pertains to a 401A plan. This agenda item is for informational purposes only this evening. At your November seventh meeting, this board executed a contract with the township's police association. The contract called for employer matches to the township's voluntary defined contribution retirement plan. East Brandywine Township's primary vehicle for employee retirement benefits are our two healthy pension plans. For a number of years, the township has offered a second voluntary retirement planning benefit, otherwise known as our 457B plan. Since November, staff has been working to put in place the mechanism for an employer match not to exceed $1,000 per employee per year. Township staff has engaged Pennsylvania Retirement Solutions to develop a 401A plan and to work with Nationwide to become the custodian of funds contributed to these accounts. Both vendors are the same as those used to administer our 457B plan. This evening, I want to share with the board the consulting services agreement in your packet and to provide an explanation for the tax vehicle I have selected. It would be possible to simply amend our existing plan, but this course of action has two significant drawbacks. The first of which is employer matches to a 457B plan are still subject to Social Security and Medicare withholdings and would reduce employee take-home pay. And two, employer matches to a 457B plan count against the IRS annual limit on maximum plan contributions. I look forward to putting a full plan in front of the board soon and to implement the entire program in January of 2025, but at this time, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you might have about those actions staff has taken thus far.
401A would be the governmental form of a 401K, I understand?
Exactly. And it would behave like a.
401Ks are only for nonprofits. Nonprofits use a 403B, and governments have to use a 401A. Welcome to the IRS.
So, I had anticipated there was a chance that there would be a plan for you to adopt this evening. It was not done in time, so it is just an information item at this juncture.
Is there any disadvantage to adopting it in the reorganization meeting, which is our next meeting?
I will put it in front of you as soon as possible. I would like to implement the matches as close to the first pay period of the year as possible.
All right, you want to handle the multi-municipal emergency medical services cost-sharing agreement?
Sure. For the last fifteen months or so, representatives of the borough of Downingtown, the townships of Cowan, East Cowan, East Bradford, and East Brandywine have been meeting to establish an appropriate municipal allocation to the Minkus Fire Company for the provision of EMS services. Also discussed was how that total allocation should be apportioned among the municipalities in the service area. Minkus provides life-saving ALS and BLS service to all areas of East Brandywine Township. East Brandywine Township is something of a junior partner in this endeavor, constituting just 8.63% of the calls for service in the Minkus service area. I'd like to thank our regional colleagues for the heavy lift on this project. In your packet this evening is an emergency services cost-sharing agreement. It's an agreement between East Brandywine Township and other municipalities in the service area. I would like your permission to execute this agreement on behalf of the township this evening. Pursuant to the agreement, East Brandywine Township's fair share in 2025 will be $49,730.38. This, not coincidentally, is the exact budgeted amount shown on page seven of the final budget you will consider later on the agenda this evening. So with that, I would respectfully ask permission to execute the agreement.
Francis, you have any questions?
I don't.
And it is in the budget, and we appreciate the hard work and the intercooperation with the other townships, and we appreciate the great service we get from Minkus, so I think this is a triple win here. So, you need a motion then, don't you?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the multi-municipal emergency medical services cost-sharing agreement.
I'll second.
And that's for just one year, right?
Correct, one year. And it's quarterly payments.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the first escrow release for Brandywine Walk.
Yeah, I am bogarting the microphone this evening. Thanks for your patience. Included in your packet is a letter from Panoni, the township engineer, dated December twelfth, 2024. It's in regard to the Brandywine Walk Phase Two Financial Security Release Number One. The gist of the letter is that Panoni is recommending that the board release financial security for the construction of public improvements in the amount of $1,711,503.98. At this time, I would respectfully ask the board to give township staff permission to process this escrow release.
Well, the print's so small, it's hard for us to read it.
There is a lot of public improvements. Just, I guess, for the audience's edification, this is not actual cash. This is a reduction in the financial security provided for the township in exchange for completing public improvement.
They have pledged the five million all right, so just letting them take their own cash back for the improvements made in Phase Two of Brandywine. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the release of the Brandywine Walk Phase Two Financial Security Release Number One.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Subdivision and zoning applications, I see none on the agenda. Ordnance is a resolution. We have Resolution Sixteen, and Mr. Revan, I'll turn it back over to you again.
After a long season of work by the volunteers of the Budget Committee and township staff, we've arrived at the final act of the budget process. In your packets this evening is a draft final budget and a draft Resolution Sixteen of 2024, adopting the final budget. As you may recall, this board has, first, heard a presentation from the Budget Committee at your first meeting in November; second, authorized township staff to advertise a preliminary budget for public comment at your second meeting in November; and, third, transferred funds to the capital fund and established tax rates and fees at your first meeting in December. And unlike the news, the dominating news story, the township's millage for fire services and general purposes did not go up. Township staff has not received any comment on the preliminary budget, which was advertised in the daily local news on November twenty-fifth. At this time, I would respectfully ask that the board adopt a Resolution Sixteen of 2024. However, I would like to make, introduce into the form of a motion to adopt Resolution Sixteen of 2024, that due to an absence of three members of the board and the need to abstain from a single agenda item, that line item, General Fund, which is O1.405.12, not be approved as part of the action tonight, and we consider that when we have all three members of the board available to do so.
I'm sorry, are there any benefit items, line items associated with that? So, the budget approves benefits for those persons in that line?
Yes.
Have to act on that to the next time.
Okay, well.
What line item is that again?
Okay, the line item is O1.405.12, and it has to do with compensation for an individual employee.
So, are you just reading O1.405.126 or the entire point one two?
Point one two. Line item O1.405.12.
And again, the line item should be removed regarding benefits?
Only in the aggregate. So, it makes it very difficult to strike from a budget. So, for example, employer match for payroll taxes is reported in the budget in the aggregate. Any salary increase would have a corresponding effect on that line item, but there's no individual line items other than the one I mentioned. That was a really complex motion. Can we equip the board with a better version of that?
Well, now, I understand now. I understand the reason and everything, so, and you explained there's no tax increases in the fire services or the general fund. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution for the 2025 fiscal year budget, less line item O1.05.12.
405. 405.12.
Done enough of a motion to this?
And I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I want to take a minute, not say anybody out here right now. The Budget Committee is a great help to the supervisor and the staff, and this is our fourth year in a row with no tax increases. So, they worked very hard, had a lot of challenges, as do all governments and individual households, and we were able to beat those challenges and on a great basis. As I tell people, governments really never have a revenue problem, they always have just an expense problem. That'll live within your revenues. Okay. Now, a public comment on non-agenda items. Any public comments? Podium there, please?
Good evening. My name is Dennis Whiteley. Renee and I are the owners of 1199 Hershey Pike. First, I want to thank all of you for your passionate time to put into the township with your volunteerism. It doesn't go unnoticed. I know unfortunately, in the world of thanklessness that we live in, there are still a few people out there that appreciate all your hard work, so hats off to you guys, the fire company, the police department, everybody that puts in all of your time to take away from your family and your, you know, your enjoyable time of your own to come in here and push this township in a nice direction. So, with that being said, thank you very much and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. The reason I'm here tonight is I've encroached a situation at my intersection of 1199 Hershey Pike, okay? As we rebuilt the building, that building will be occupied as of January first. Something that we recently incurred this summer was on several occasions, we had flooding issues, which has been within inches of flooding inside the building itself. I spoke with Luke earlier this week. He can interject when he sees possible or need to. We spoke with the PULTY organization, which is improving the intersection traffic flow, and also some of the things that their township required as part of their road improvement for the development of Apple Cross, and I guess some of the other developments that are in here. The issue that I'm having is, when we were rebuilding that building, we were required to control our water runoff to our, from our improvements. With that being said, we did that according to township and county rules, and so we managed to do that. The issue that I have is I have no curbing on either side of the, on 322 side and on Bonneville roadside. And with that being said, we are having flooding issues that are within inches of undermining the building. Several occasions, we've had to replace the mulch, which is within inches of the building, where all the mulch from all the plantings around the front of the building have eroded up, and then, of course, with the mulch being lighter than water, floats over to the drain and ends up with a foot or two of mulch that it plugs the drains and then the water builds up. So, we've had it within inches of coming into the front door, and that's several feet off the, you know, off the road. So, as part of the improvement that PULTY is having to do, you know, we're trying to resolve two problems. One, the building has already been hit twice by cars from traffic, okay? Twice, I've had to do improvements to the building from impact from cars. There's been four times when I've had the turning sign actually snapped off that sits on the apron of the entrance of the property, where that's been knocked off. And, of course, if you go there tonight, you can see there's a telephone pole that snapped off that has another telephone pole next to it that took my mailbox out and everything. So, we have a pretty bad situation where we have a building that sits a little too close to the road, and at this point, you know, I'm trying to look for a way to resolve a few problems. Our water issue and our impact issue of the building being struck by, you know, traffic. So, trying to think forward and put our best foot forward. I contacted Luke, and we've been in, we've been in contact with Bowman Engineers, which is part of the PULTY organization, and we tried to get some curbing that would actually encroach all the way around the intersection and allow the water to be drained off. I actually have a picture here, fortunately have pictures from the eighties still on my phone, from the front of the building where the gas pumps used to be. I don't know if any. I don't know if any of yous remember, but there was gas pumps in the front of the building, and that was poured concrete. If, I don't know if the picture will show it. But I have about an eight-inch drain hole that actually sits in the front of the garage. See if I can get that. That's going to be a little harder. It's right there. That's an eight-inch pipe that literally sits right in front of the garage, right where the garage room used to be, okay? So what's happening is, when you look at what's out on the road, you have, I don't know what, what's a sewer drain? Four foot by three, two and a half? What's a sewer grate that sits out on the road for the water to drain in?
Four by two.
Four by two. So we have water that's running down the hill, that's running-
Not sewage, it's stormwater.
Stormwater, I'm sorry. Wrong verbiage, I'm sorry. I apologize. Well, I, yeah. So with that being said, the water is now running off of both the 322 and Hopewell Road onto my property. It's literally going into where that drain is, which is only an eight-inch pipe. And what would normally be a four-foot by two-foot drain is going to try to go into an eight-inch drain, and it's literally like a whirlpool. It actually pulls like almost the sod out of the ground because the water's in there trying to go down that pipe. So trying to divert that water and out, keep it out onto the road and get it into the storm drains would be the optimal thing to do. Now, with that being said, we, I contacted the Bowman Engineers, which is part of the PULTY, and I said, "Look, you guys need a right of way to come in here and move this light back because you need to do the road improvements, which is required by the township and the state and whatever to do the road improvements." But at this point, you know, we're tearing the road up and we're making the improvements. We need to complete this intersection because as the road has been widened, like between me and Sunoco, which used to be Landho, Landho used to be about five feet lower in height in that parking lot over there compared to where it is today. So we get that extra runoff that comes down, we've got more, you know, runoff, Hopewell Road is wider now than it ever is, four lanes wide right there. So there's extra water that's running off, but there's no way to keep it from coming onto my property. So I'm looking for some help from the township if possible because you guys are directly involved with this improvement part of the township or of the road, which is required. Trying to fulfill the need for an extra drain or whatever's needed curbing to resolve several problems. One, the building being hit and keeping the water off the property and get it diverted into the drains before one day when we have one of these summer floods that my building is sitting on 322. And that's not a good thing. I mean, it's the prettiest building in town, it's the newest, and at this point, we're trying to survive the worst-case scenario. And we're within inches, I mean, literally, there's been times when I've gone down there and within four inches of where my siding starts, the mulch has left a line on the side of the building. So, you know, this is a potential problem that can be averted if during this situation where they're redoing the intersection, they can correct and fulfill the problem that's needed there, it's been needed for a while. I've actually got pictures in the phone here that I have from when the building was sitting there and the roads were dirt on 322. I've got a 1920's car with spoke wheels sitting in my driveway in front of the old building where the gas pumps were. So it goes to show you how much the road has come up. When we redid the building, I already knew that we had water issues that we would take into the building on rainy days, so we brought it up two levels a block and started a new foundation from there. But now with the water running off, we're right there. You know, we're within an inch of a potential problem. So I'm looking forward to the township to be helpful in whatever way possible to resolve an issue that's standing on the doorstep.
Mr. Chair, may I provide a little more context? And I intend this as a friendly amendment. Thank you for the description of the problems you're experiencing.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to project, well, I have project a plan, and I want to provide a little background on this plan. This plan is prepared by Bowman, or, which is a, has acquired McMahon. So if I call it McMahon or Bowman, they're the same entity.
Understood, yep.
They've done this plan-
They're the PULTY engineers.
Correct. They are, they are the engineer-
It's a PULTY project.
Correct.
Not a township project.
Right. So-
Driven by the state, part of the state's requirement.
Correct.
For the HOP.
So when, when PULTY came in and built homes in East Brandywine Township, they were required as a condition statement on their HOP plan to make improvements to this intersection. What I've projected is the most recent iteration of the plan to make improvements at the intersection. I'm going to, just for a minute, deviate on why this is important, nerd out here. This table shows on the far left, conditions in 2005. And the number in parentheses represents the delay in seconds to get through the intersection. So the interpretation of this, in your weekday AM rush in 2005, it took on average 142 seconds to get through that intersection. With the projections for where we're going to 2025, that same experience of going through the intersection will take 171 seconds by 2027. Means it would take you three minutes to get through the signal. What Bowman or McMahon is proposing to improve is the column that you see that's number four there that says, "Conditions with Intersection Improvements." If they make the improvements they've shown, they project that the experience of getting through that intersection during the weekday AM rush will be 42 seconds, which is not only a heck of a lot better than where it's projected to be, but better than it was even in 20, in 2005. So getting this project done is, in my opinion, a high priority. The, I think, I want to spend a second just drilling down a little on, on, on the plan that I showed earlier, and these colored markings are my own. The orange represents the signal easement that is required to implement the improvements. That signal easement is on land owned by Mr. Whiteley and his family. So the, in order to implement the changes, Mr. Whiteley will need to provide to Pendott a signal easement over that orange area. The blue line represents the edge of the milling and asphalt overlay. You could say, south of that line, there's going to be new surface to the roadway, north of that line, there is not. The red and the green lines represent the curbing around Mr. Whiteley's property. Unlike what the plan says, where it says depressed curb, in the, on the green line, Bowman has agreed to put in an elevated curb. They've agreed to amend the plan to put in an elevated curb. What Bowman has not agreed is to put in curb on the red line. And at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Whiteley, my representations match yours, or we deviated at all?
Dead on.
All right. I'm very glad. The question is, is it appropriate that the township insists that Bowman make the improvements that Mr. Whiteley is requesting as part of an exchange to procure the necessary signal easement? And if not, as part of this project, should it be part of a future project to make the improvements? I've got just one more exhibit I'd like to show, and that is a Google Street View.
Okay, but your device has to be unlocked for that-
My phone thinks it's talking to, I'm talking to it. Okay, so if you remember, the red line on my plan, the red line here is the same. Unfortunately, because I'm not consistent, what was a green line on mine here is represented as a-
Salmon color.
Salmon beige pinkish color, which is an area where a vertical curb would be installed. And then, the, the, I know I said I had one more exhibit, but I am going to actually show two more. This is an excerpt from a traffic accident report, and it shows one of the two impacts that Mr. Whiteley described. This is how a vehicle came off of Horseshoe Pike and struck the pharmacy building. So I can completely, I will, I will, that observation is 100% accurate, there have been vehicle strikes. I would also point out that the particular angle at which this car struck might be mitigated by the change that Bowman did agree to make, which is elevated curb on the Horseshoe Pike That's, that's, that's the extent of my context to the request. Thank you for listening to me.
So will you put, put that photo up that shows the aerial view?
It's the action note.
So on this, on this aerial view right here, that inlet that you described, Dennis, is right here in the middle of the yard, that's the eight-inch pipe, is that your-
Yeah, you'll see a stone spot right there between the red light and the front of the building there.
When you did the improvements and reconstructed this corner, did you put in these curbs?
What curbs are that?
The curbs that are existing now, the depressed curbs on Hopewell-
Okay.
And the depressed curbs on 322.
So, so this is a picture from 1980?
Because it looks like they were, there was new curbs installed-
This is a picture from 1980.
Coming up Hopewell, but they're depressed, right?
Going the best I can. So these are the gas pumps in front of the garage. And if I go over here, that happens to be John Kessler's car from right down, John Kessler, who's down here at the great big trees on the S turn. But that opening right there, you can see where the curb stops? That's where the curb still stops today.
So that's existing curb that is-
That opening, that across there was flat, and the same on the opposite side. Because that's how the cars came in and out of the property. So as part of the improvement, the Pendott required us, when we redid the building, we had five revisions on how did they have that entrance in and out and what we had to do. When-
You've got a storm inlet right here on the corner of the building, and it's shown on that plan that it takes, the water comes down, Hopewell goes to that storm inlet and then goes through the intersection and down to the stream. So if you were to put that curb there, wouldn't that trap the water in place there and not give it anywhere to go?
And that's, that's what they said they didn't want to be involved with. So I said, well then-
Because that opens up a whole nother can of worms.
Correct. If you look right in front of the red light, there's actually silt laying there right now because as they improved the road, they never improved the drainage for that part of the intersection, for that side. They just continued to lay blacktop over blacktop over blacktop, and you can see that that wasn't two lanes wide or three lanes wide or whatever it is now. But now we have water that's making it over onto my property, and it's literally flooding against the front of the shrubbery where it's taking all the mulch.
If you put, if you raise the curbs, wouldn't that make the condition worse?
I asked them then to put two drains in, or at least a drain in somewhere about where the word curb is. You need to put a drain in there or maybe even closer to the red light. If they need to put two, the water lays in there because it's a low area. So at some point, you have to resolve the problem. You can't keep the can down the road because it'll never go away. We're already redesigning and redoing the improvements to the intersection. Now's the time, probably about where that handprint is in the lower picture, there probably should be a drain right there as well to help that one way back by my exit and on the lower picture. And on the red line, there should be probably two drains right there, somewhere spaced out. And I said, "Hey, the worst-case scenario, maybe you can re-mill the road and get the water to drain back to the left side of that red line because that's where the other drain is on the corner of that building. You can see some stone and a little bit of a culvert there. It's actually been busted away because one of the crowd trucks hit it one time and busted half the culvert away." So, you know, that's, 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 this is an intersection that needs attention to detail at this point of its stage. And we have a window of opportunity because right now is when we're doing this intersection. And, you know, if you ignore it, it's not going to go away, it's only going to get worse. So we've got, you know, we've already got the construction going on where the red light's going to get moved, you're going to tear up, you know, the vertical curb out in front of the building. Why not finish the job, do it right, and be done with it forever? Once you do it once, you're going to be done forever. If you kick the can down the road, one day, you know, I'm going to have four feet of water or two feet of water, whatever it's going to be, because as we keep building all these developments, all these retention basins only have a certain critical component that gets them to the point where they finally overflow. And when this thing's, you know, three foot underwater, it's not, it's not an optimal time to resolve the problem. The problem is now. And, and, you know, with that being said, you know, I'm asking for the help from the township.
What is your ask now? You're asking for the curb to be installed and storm water?
Curb to be installed, and now they said that there needed to be drain in front of that red area because it sits too low. And there was an engineer that was out there doing some kind of surveying just two weeks ago, and I stopped in because I saw him out there. And he said, "Well, maybe we can mill that road and make that, that road a little bit go toward the back corner of the building there and allow it to go in the edge of that culvert where that red line ends to the left-hand side." But I said, "You know what? If you have, if you have that much water coming here, why would you want to put another drain in out here? There's no drain out that, in the middle of that intersection where it needs to be." And they said, "Well, it's going to cost too much money, we're not interested in it." So, you know-
Well, I don't think that was their answer. I think their answer was, "It's outside the scope."
Yeah.
Understood. But, but I asked them to go forward with it-
We're not involved in this at all, really, other than the combination part. Part. So really, you need to be asking Pendott, not us. I mean, we can't go in there and construct anything.
No, no.
Are you going to take responsibility for all that you're asking them to do if, in fact, you continue to have problems? If the engineer says that it's going to make the, compound the problem and not actually solve the problem, and they go ahead and do this, and it does make things worse, now you're going to be in, you know, locked in with these guys trying to get them to fix this thing, you know, when they're saying that it's better to just leave it the way it is.
That's understandable, but you have to understand that I own the property, I don't own the highway. You guys have a little connection with the town, with the state more than I do. In other words, well, you can have all you want, but, but at the end of the day-
You might think that, but that is so not true.
Okay. So let's, then let's take a next step forward. So I spoke with Tony tonight, and when we did the improvements on our corner, it was required for us, in order to get our building occupancy permit, that he had to pay $40,000, in excess of $40,000, for future rate improvement fees. Okay? That money was paid to the township, East Brandywine Township. At some point, the township is responsible on their end. If we're going to pay into this, at some point, the responsibility has to stand on somebody's spot, not mine. My water's not running onto your property and creating a situation. The road water is running onto my property, creating a situation, okay? So trying to put my best foot forward, I'm saying, "Hey, guys, at some point, somebody else is responsible for this and it's not me."
It's Pendott.
It doesn't matter who it is, I don't have the ability to make this happen. I'm, I'm required to give an easement for the red light. In exchange, I'm asking for some improvements, whether it's whoever's going to do it, but it can't be me.
Right. If, if I can put a point and maybe put this in the form of a, of a, of an agenda item. First, I'll start with, with my recommendation, and I, this is probably where I'm going to get a cringe. I think that PULTY and their engineer are on the hook to make improvements to increase the flow of traffic through that neighborhood. I think the diagnosis that there are storm water problems is probably accurate, but I think PULTY's on the hook to make improvements to get cars through that intersection. And I think the additional work that's been requested by the, by Mr. Whiteley is beyond the scope of what PULTY is doing. That is, so, that, that's my recommendation. I guess if, if the board felt differently, they could direct me to approach PULTY and their engineer and ask them to amend the plan to include elevated curb in the section shown on the, and add stormwater inlets in the section shown.
What I'm looking at, and what's coming to my mind, is that you would not want to raise that curb, but you would may want to put a stormwater inlet right here at this, where the raised curb meets this sidewalk flat area, so that when the water comes across there, it hits that inlet, and that inlet would be on your property and not in the street. Is that your thoughts?
No, I didn't want to put a drain in it. I didn't want to encourage any more water going any closer to that building than needed to be. My objective is to-
If you put it in the street, I just, with that inlet that you have right now on the corner of the building-
Mm-hmm.
That's where the water's going.
That's where the water was going 45 years ago, 55, 65 years ago.
And that's where it's going now?
Well, some of it is.
Well, I mean, based on-
It's ending up in my front yard, which it never did. And as we keep raising the elevation, like I said, when you raised the elevation of Sunoco, when Landho used to be the same level as the road, it was just barely over the road. Now we've got a building, if I stand on my property and I look over at Landho, that's 68 feet higher. That, all that property now sends water across the road. It doesn't all make it to the drain because water decides what it wants to do. And now it's draining across and- And now it's draining across, and as I get more and more water, I'm at the point where I got to say, hey, guys, I'm putting a flag up.
So where's it, where's the curb going to go if you run it up Hopewell? Because you've got, you've got this inlet here that you can't run past that, otherwise you're going to, you're going to, you're not going to capture the water. All the water runs right into that inlet on the corner of the building.
Correct. But the problem is, the grass sits lower than the inlet. So as the water comes down from the intersection, it runs into the grass yard, it runs up against the building and takes all the mulch away from the plants, and then sucks it around to the drains on both sides of the building, both that corner and the other. I, I wasn't looking to run the, the, the curbing past that spot. It can run right up to that culvert, to the edge of that culvert, so that, that way, that water can run right into it.
Well, I, I see that as being a trap area where it's going to really lock the water in and concentrate it to the center on your property, and the only outlet you would have would be to put a box on your property if you put a curb up.
Well, I couldn't put a.
But I'm, I mean, I'd, I'd defer to the engineers if, if it's something they want to take a look at and see if there's, you know, a feasible and reasonable solution. But I understand your point that it's outside the scope.
Right, I mean.
Polte's engineers.
We have no money to make improvements on private property.
I'm not asking you to put improvements on my property. I don't own the right-ofway. Okay? What I'm saying is, we're, there's no curb now. We need to put a curb, and where the word curb is, is probably where there could use to be a drain that drains into whatever culvert it wants to go to, so it can relieve that area of water. It's not ever going to go away. It's never going to get better on its own.
What about you bringing a landscaper in and raise that grass area and put a swell in it so it diverts water away from your building and towards that drain then? I mean, that would be the least expensive.
You know, I, I don't, I, I'm just asking for what I thought was best. With no curb being there, you know, we have an issue already where the building's been hit twice, the sign's been knocked off four times, we have traffic issues that are impacting the building. Believe me, when I came in here 23 years ago and asked to move that building back, and it was required that I left it because the rulebook said, which can't be ever overlooked, that we had to keep that on the exact footprint, I did not want that building seven feet on that side and three feet on Hopewell Road from the road. I asked to move it back, and it was required that I left it there because the rulebook said that it's a, gotta be in original condition, but we can't think outside the box. So what I'm trying to do is, now that I have an issue to deal with, I'm trying to help think out the box, side to box. At what point to resolve the water issue there before the building gets flooded or after it comes off the foundation and it's sitting out in front of the pizza shop? Because you see this stuff on TV where the water moves buildings, and I'm only trying to be proactive as to, do you want to work with the problem while we have the opportunity? Or do we want to wait till it's too late?
On the Polte, and they've said it's outside the scope, so therefore they're not interested. I don't know what else we can do.
Well, the township was involved with acquiring the right-ofways, which is what I was informed of, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm inquiring to you guys that there's an issue that needs to be resolved as part of me giving a right-ofway, of me giving part of the property away to these guys for their use. You have to remember, this problem wasn't here when Bill Kay was there, and it was a farm. We didn't have this water problem. It's as we keep building around that this problem, it just gets bigger and bigger, and it won't go away. And as we keep building and the water keeps coming down the road, it happened in Downingtown, look at the police station, right? We all know from our past history, we can read into this ahead of time. So I'm trying to be proactive and bring this guys, this to your attention. Now's a good time to resolve it. Whether it's PENDOT that does it, the township that pays into it, it doesn't matter. But it's not my problem to resolve a problem that was caused by what came into the community. Okay? I'm being kind and I'm being considerate and asking for help, and that's why I'm here tonight. And, you know, like I said, there was 40 grand plus paid into future road improvement fees. And I know for a fact that I was told that the Polte gave quite a bit of money for future road improving fees to the township. And so there's, I don't know what the expense is, but I can imagine it's way less than 100 grand or 50 grand even to do what needs to be done there to make that intersection what it needs to be.
I'm not an engineer, so I'm.
I, I would say on the subject of the traffic impact fee, similar to what I said about the, the, the priority for the work to be done by Polte here, the priority for the traffic impact fee is to make those improvements that make it easier for cars to get through from point A to point B rapidly. So when you look at the, the plan for the use of the Act 209 money, it has to do with expanding capacity and the rating of intersections, not necessarily with addressing stormwater issues on existing roadways. That, that, I could, you, Mr. Scully certainly did make a contribution to the traffic impact fee. I just would say that the, the purpose of those contributions is prioritized for alleviating traffic congestion, not stormwater issues.
Okay, so let's put it forward this way then. Let's say next, next week I get down there and put a five-foot berm that's six foot wide from that red light post all the way around the front of the property, and now the water still lays on the road. What have we accomplished? Because I'm, this is what this gentleman, this is what Carl's saying, we put a berm there, so how about if I put a berm this high, six foot wide, all the way around the front of the property, right up to the edge of the curb, and now where's the water laying? We're right back where we started, isn't it?
I, I, I'm not here to dispute your identification of a problem. I understand. I, I'm not, you're the person who can identify it.
To help you, but look at the parking situation. How, how quick was that fixed?
It was great. I, I thank you guys, I know you.
You care.
I know. I, I'm, I'm with you 100%.
Something that we could do.
Yes.
You're asking us something that we can't really do.
I mean, all we can do is ask Polte's engineers to take a look at it and see if they, if there's a reasonable solution that they would want to enter into. I can see their concern of this thing just going down a rabbit hole on them, because if they do something, now they're responsible for it, and if you're not satisfied with it, you're going to, it's going to be contentious between you and them, you know, forever. Like you guys could wind up really having some problems in the future.
I don't think with, with, with a simple drain out there.
We're not really involved in this, other than to acquire the right-ofway, you know, which we, you know.
That was all we were tasked with.
Sure.
Which we really didn't want to do.
And we didn't.
But now we're going to do it because we have no choice.
Right. Understood. But we're all in this together. Like I say, if we all work together, we all smile together. And you know what? There's a problem here that has never been addressed. I'm standing here tonight to say, do you want to address it now or when it's too late? I don't, it doesn't matter to me how it wants to go about, I have insurance. If you want to wait till the thing's got water up to the middle of the windows and, you know, it's such a sad situation, okay? We, we left, we left the, we left it go, and now we've got a problem to deal with. If, if that building comes off its foundation and ends up out in the middle of 322, well then I guess that's what I have to deal with. We'll just back up and start all over again. But I'm trying to resolve a problem. Every intersection, the opposite side of the road at Sunoco's been resolved, when they did that improvement, they did all that intersection. Obviously, Polte's going to have to do drains and storm drains on the opposite side of 322.
Storm drain right here.
And this thing got ignored and got ignored and got ignored. So as the road surface came up, it's, it's encroached on a problem that is now on ours. But if it requires me to put a big berm out there, I'll just put, you know, a four-foot by six-foot berm out front and just let the water sit out on the road.
I would say something that is probably difficult to hear, but I, I have to say that when we ask residents what they, what things most detract from their quality of life in East Brandywine Township, we get two answers. And we ask this question as part of our comprehensive plan. One, traffic. Two, the amount of residential development. I think this board and prior boards have done an excellent job trying to address those two primary concerns we hear from residents. I mentioned that this project dates back to 2005. For, for 20 years, a improvement that could get more cars through that intersection has been delayed, and, and, and I'm not going to, I don't want to, I don't want to sound like I'm blaming anybody, but part of the problem is that we've been unable to get the cooperation of people who need to give either right-ofway or easements to get the project complete. We here in the aggregate fix this problem, but we here at the specific level fix this problem without adversely affecting my property. And we can't simultaneously do both. Somebody, in order to make this project that's in the common interest to make it done, is going to have to sacrifice.
I'm done sacrificing. I've sacrificed a lot to put that building on that corner. I have been driven into the ground backwards seven ways to China, and I am absolutely, positively not doing anything more to help improve this beautiful town and make it any better than what I have done, my wife and I have done. We have bent over backwards over and over again. At this point, we're asking for help on the other side of the fence. And we are politely asking, and I know that nobody ever wants to be involved, but at some point, there has to be involvement from everybody. And it doesn't matter if it's, if it's a trifecta, if it's us, you guys, the state, you guys have more connections than I do. Okay? And, and I know that you say you don't, but you do. Okay? I can't pick the phone up and call, you know, John Fetterman, you know? I'm just saying. I don't have, I don't have the ability to contact.
Pick the phone up and call our state representative.
To, to contact the correct people. But, but we have an issue here. We're at the intersection, we're at a critical point where this whole intersection is going to be ripped up for quite some time. It's, this is going to happen in two or three weeks. And so is now the time to do it, or we're going to do it, and then we're going to go back and do it over again? Not, not to jump into a situation different, where my building is right now, they're putting the development just above me. They did everything they needed to do, the widening of the road, everything, it was all done. Now, PECO's coming down through there, and they're digging up the burning blacktop. They put down, it was there a week or two. They dug it all up and it had steel plates on it, now the road's got all this sagging and, it's, it's like the left hand doesn't talk to the right hand. So being in business for 43 years, the best thing we can do is communicate with each other. The best thing we can do is work with each other. The worst thing we can do is work against each other.
But we've been working, that's, that's why we went back to Polte. Luke has spent a lot of time on it.
Absolutely.
And we're surprised they agreed to the raised curb. I think that's a huge win, win. So we've done everything we can do. I don't know, Luke, you know more about this, I mean, other than going to PENDOT yourself, you know, or Polte yourself, or have your engineer go to Polte, whatever, there's nothing really we can do.
Well, I was just informed by Bowman, that organization, that, that you guys, you know, were, were involved with acquiring the right-ofways.
What?
Were involved with acquiring the right-ofway, I think, unless I, unless I.
That's what we've been tasked with.
Unless I've been, been informed incorrectly. But with that being said, you know, I'm, I'm trying to inform everybody here that there's a problem. And, you know, at what point.
And we've passed out.
Who owns this?
Correct.
Is that privately owned?
They solved a lot of the problem. They didn't solve the red line problem.
I mean, Ken Calvinall stood there, which is the PENDOT representative for, I guess, this area. He said to me, hey, whatever Polte wants to do, I'm giving them the green light to go ahead and do it. Okay? As part of resolving the water coming in off of that road. Okay? This is exact words when I stood there just two weeks or three weeks ago with him. So, you know, if it takes some push from you guys to help, push from me, I'm all in. I have no problem helping out to try to resolve a problem.
We're kind of going in circles now. I would.
And I'm open for options.
I, I will. I will meet with, with Luke after the holidays, he's on vacation.
Okay.
And we'll see if there's any page we have not touched. Is that okay with you, Luke?
I, I'm, I'm happy to invite, invest the time necessary to get this project moving.
We'll see if there's any page we've missed. Maybe, and that may include, and most likely will include us contacting Polte again.
Okay.
Et cetera. Important thing is, is that we don't have any money to fix your problem, and we don't even have any real say over Polte because of the way the agreement is, traffic, the highway occupancy permit. So we're the ones who also have issues like you have that can't get solved.
Well, I'm, I'm at a point where I can't give in anymore. Polte makes hundreds of millions of dollars in profit every year. Okay? It's not like they don't have the money. So.
If the job is done, off their books and they've left town.
Right. So now's the time to have them on the hook. Well, you haven't left town yet. You guys have made quite a good, good living off of Polte's development and everything that comes in here. Okay? And I know that they give to the fire company, they give to the road improvement fees. At some point, some of that money needs directed to fix a problem that is, that is here and now. Okay? So I'm, I'm open for, if you guys want to meet at the property anytime between now and whatever, it'd be best if you walked in there and looked at it rather than talk at it from here.
So before, before we end this conversation, I'm going to ask you something about the stormwater inlet that you're suggesting would solve some of the problems on your property. And it looks to me, just from a grading standpoint and from the topography and from the flow of the street, that that grate would have to be on your property and not in the street because it would not serve any purpose in the street because it's flowing away from it. I mean, do you have a willingness for it to be located in your property, and do you take responsibility and release Polte if there's any problems in the future?
Well.
Because you're asking for something that, you know, whether or not an engineer weighs in and says, yeah, this is the best solution. If he weighs in and says, no, that's not a good solution, we don't recommend doing that because it's going to cause more problems, you know, where do we go from there?
Okay. So my answer to that is, if you, if you were to go across the road to the Sunoco, as you come down to the intersection, there's two or three or even four inlets that are out on 322, beyond the curb, all the way around that corner, on that side of the road. On my side of the road, it could be exactly the same thing, where I have maybe two of these stormwater drains around that red corner that are out on the road, just like across the street, just like in front of the building where the exit is out of my property, there's one that sits right there where my exit is. Over across the street on the other side of the road, there's, there's drains. Why can't those drains be right in front of the curb where it can actually take the water on and just drain the water off?
Well, we'll have to talk to an engineer about that.
Right, that's what we're going to look at. I don't want to keep going on.
Okay.
I've given you more than three minutes.
I appreciate it, and I thank you all for that, and I thank you for listening, but it was really important that we resolve this before, you know, we overlook it. And that's my, and that was my goal tonight. So I'm sorry to be long-winded, but, but my objective is to make sure that, that this